Turn my off.
Are you gonna put the splash screen back up? Or do we need that?
Nope, I can do that.
That way people see that when they come in. Lon, is that okay?
Sure. Yeah, no, that's fine. That's great. Just a couple more minutes. See if we get some more people that will log on. All right, I think we will get started. So good evening, everyone who is attending tonight's webinar. First, I want to say thank you to the Anchorage School District and Anchorage School Board for inviting me to speak with prospective candidates and those that are just interested in what it might take and what's involved in being on a school board. So it's good to be with you. I hope I can provide you with some information that will help you understand what the role of the school board is, what the role of superintendent is, some things about being on a school board, and a little bit about what we at the Association of Alaska School Boards do for school boards. So maybe I'll start out with just introducing myself. My name is Juan Garrison. I'm the Executive Director of the Association of Alaska School Boards. I started out as a school board member in Sitka. I am not a professional educator. I was a fish biologist for 30 years, worked in fisheries enhancement primarily in Southeast Alaska, but got elected to the school board in Sitka and had the fortune to be on a really good board. And so that was a wonderful opportunity to me. And that good board was one of the things that made them so good was they had created a great board culture and they had a good sense of trying to pull in and make sure that board members got the support they needed. And that included just from within the board and then also through ASB, who I had no knowledge of until I got on the board. So long story short, I got on the board. I ended up on the Board of Directors for ASB for several years and then I went to work for ASB once I got done with my fisheries career. And then just a year ago, I took over as the Executive Director of the Association. So sometimes you never know what's gonna happen. But let me get into, let me share my screen. And we'll get into the presentation. Now, as I understand it, you'll have the opportunity to post questions in the Q and A box. And I'll try to keep my eye on that and either answer those questions as we go along verbally or type the answer to you. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not the quickest typist in the West. So, but again, welcome. This particular presentation is really going to be focused on running for the school board. What do school boards do? And so let's find out what's involved in being on the school board. Let me get this working. Okay. So here's what we're going to cover this evening. We're going to go through what the role and purpose of the board is. Then we're going to understand, try to get you to understand a little bit what the difference between governance and management is. We're going to introduce you to the idea of board policy and what board policy is. Then we're going to move into the importance of the board and superintendent relationship. And then we're going to wrap it up with the board standards. So the Association of Alaska School Boards nearly three decades ago adopted board standards. We were one of the first in the country to create and adopt board standards. And we'll go through what those board standards is, are, and nearly every school district, nearly every school board has adopted those board standards as a part of how they're expected to operate as a school board. So what is a school board? It's a great question because many people kind of have an idea of what a school board is. But they don't really know kind of the ins and outs and exactly what's involved in it. Well, a school board in the state of Alaska is a locally elected governance body that's responsible for governing public education. And most school boards in the state of Alaska range in size from five to about 11 school board members. So there are a lot of boards that are five members, a lot of boards that are seven members. You get to some of the more remote districts, which are Regional Education Association areas, such as the Lower Cusco Quim School District or the Bering Strait School District, some of those. And they may have a greater number of board members. So in those districts, for instance, Bering Strait School District has 11 school board members. So it's a big board. And they represent the various different villages and regions within that that large geographic area. Local school boards are have the delegated authority by the state legislature to provide public education. So when they created the system of governing for delivering public education, they delegated their authority, which was required by the state constitution to provide public education to local school boards. So that has led to locally controlled implementation of the constitutional mandate to provide public education. So school board members, even though locally elected are essentially an instrument of the state. You you work on behalf of the state of Alaska to locally provide education to Alaska students. So what are the things that school boards must do? Well, there's really four things by statute that school boards must do that they're required to do. One is you hire and evaluate the superintendent, which is your only direct employee. So the relationship between the board and the superintendent is a unique one. They're your chief executive officer. They run and implement the wishes of the board in terms of how the district operates. So they're the one person that reports back to you. And and that's really important to understand. The next thing is school board set and approve the district budget. The school board is responsible for approving a budget and allocating the resources within that budget to make sure that a system of education is available in your school district for each child in the district. So that's important. The next piece is the school board adopts and reviews curriculum and instructional material. This is a big chore. And oftentimes, one of the most misunderstood. There's oftentimes, unless you're a previous education professional, this can be a piece where it's a little bit of a mystery. Most boards are a little bit more uncomfortable. And you have to rely on your education professionals to help a board understand, you know, what goes into curriculum? And then what goes into the instructional materials. But state statute says boards have to approve both the curriculum and instructional materials used within the district. So this is a continuing process with most boards. They get on a a schedule where, you know, every five to six years generally a piece of the public education program, say, science or mathematics or social studies, that curriculum and those instructional materials come under review. And the board needs to decide, you know, is everything good? Or do we need to look at something new? So that's your role as a school board member is to review and approve those. And then the final one, school boards develop and adopt policies to govern the district. And the policies, and we'll get into this in a little bit more detail, are incredibly important. They out, they lay out the framework by which the district will operate, the why and the how. So we'll get into that here shortly. Boards lead districts by the following. So just as these were the four things that boards had to do, these are ways boards can lead. So boards need to secure and allocate resources. In the state of Alaska, that securing resources usually means advocating with both state and local governments to help support education. In the state of Alaska, school boards do not have any authority to generate revenue. So school boards can't go out for a bond or directly, they can't raise taxes, those kinds of things. They can certainly support bonds that are done through your local municipalities. But they have no authority to actually generate funds. So the only way school districts in Alaska get funding is either through local contributions, state contributions, or federal contributions. The next piece is boards lead by making policy decisions. So boards have to develop policies to guide and operate the district. And making policy decisions sometimes means developing or or changing policies, but usually it means using policies to make sure that 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 the decisions that are made are based on what is what is put into the policy manual. So there's a foundation there. The next piece is boards are monitor the effectiveness of both the policies and their leadership with the oversight of the district. So it's critically important that boards are continually, you know, asking questions and expecting information on how the district is doing. What's student achievement like? What are the programs that are happening? And their role is really oversight, the governance of the district and understanding how the decisions they make and the goals that they set, along with the implementation of perhaps your district strategic plan are creating public education framework that's moving kids forward, that's producing good student achievement. Boards also develop policies for that governance, and I mentioned that a little bit earlier. So not only do boards use policy, but sometimes you have to develop new policies and they usually do this in concert with the superintendent. I would say rarely do boards do this without the representation or participation of the superintendent. Because superintendents ultimately have to implement the policies that the board has approved. And then finally, boards can lead by connecting with and representing stakeholders. So you were elected as public officials, local public officials. And you need to be responsive to that public. And once you're elected, you need, the the idea is, you know, you're responsive to everybody. Now, there may be a group of people that was extremely supportive of you as a candidate. But now you sit on the board and you have a responsibility to all the stakeholders in the district and to be responsive to all stakeholders. And it's not easy. It it can be a tough task to weigh, you know, how exactly that is going to work. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in the presentation. So let's talk a little bit about the idea and the difference between governance versus management. You know, what is the difference between these two statements? Well, if we take a look at what the key roles of a school board member is, and we just kind of covered that a little bit, we can see that school boards influence policy. School boards have a responsibility again for curriculum, curriculum and instruction. They have a responsibility about the budget and allocating resources. And then they also have a responsibility about hiring and evaluating your one employee, which is the superintendent. And all of that should be focused on student achievement and student achievement should be the primary role of a strategic plan and your board goals. So everything that the school board does should have a purpose for improving and providing an opportunity for every student to have an excellent education every day. So what are students going to get out of this? They need to have those opportunities. So governance, let's take a look at just the the definition of governance. Well, governance is really the way we rule things, what the norms and actions are structured to sustain and regulate and hold, you know, the board and the system accountable. So a government may operate as a democracy where citizens vote on who should govern and the public good is really the goal. So for school boards, the public good is making sure that each student has that opportunity to learn and that we're providing those students with an education that's going to serve them well and serve our society well. So that's what governance is. Some roles and responsibilities that are associated with the governance part, your role as a potential board member. So the only power that that is available to a board member happens when the board convenes as a governing body. So you, as an individual board member, have no additional authority or power to do anything outside of the board itself. So it's only when the board is convened as a governing body do you have the opportunity to really do business. So the board considers and approves policies. We just talked about that a little bit. The board adopts a budget. Generally, the superintendent and the administration put forward a recommended budget. And the board will go through that over a period of time and and it's usually an iterative process. Each district could be a little bit different. There may be several hearings, lots of input. It can be a very lengthy process. And it can involve lots of stakeholders. So in Anchorage, it can be a pretty complex thing. It's a big budget. There's a lot of pieces to the budget. And there's a lot of stakeholders. So adopting the budget is a big piece. The board delegates to the superintendent all executive functions. So the board is not in charge of the day in, day out operation of the district. The board has oversight and governance responsibilities to make sure that that is happening. But the board delegates that authority to make sure that the that the district is operating to the superintendent through their executive functions. The board allows the superintendent to manage all employees. So the board is not directly involved in managing employees. And this sometimes can can create heartache because at times you're going to have board members that feel they have that authority or they they feel like they really need to push forward, you know, an opinion or an agenda regarding an employee or a group of employees, whatever it may be. But the superintendent is the one through policy that really manages all employees. The board must keep the superintendent informed. So one of the things that we, one of the adages that we really like to focus on is we want no surprises. We want no surprises from the board to the superintendent and the superintendent to the board. In other words, in other words, there's good two-way communication. Like the board isn't scheming and coming up with things and and would surprise the superintendent with a new proposal or something out of the blue about something they would like the superintendent to do or all of a sudden criticize the superintendent on something. You know, that 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 they were not prepared to understand. So no surprises. That's a big key. And we'll talk about that in the board superintendent relationships. Boards also must understand that there is a complaint process. So you naturally as school board members are going to be kind of a, you know, you're you're a way that the community can talk to the school system. All right. And that's an important role that school board members feel, Phil. So for school board members, you need to anticipate that you're going to get comments and questions from the public that are gonna, you know, gonna be centered around, okay, I see this happening in the school district. I have a concern about this. Can you fix it? And one of the things we tell new school board members all the time is it's not your responsibility to directly fix that. The board may need to address issues at some point, but really if it's a complaint or a concern, most of the time, especially if it's in regard to programs or personnel, that needs to go, you know, through a complaint process that's specified in policy, but it really goes ultimately through the superintendent first before it comes to the board. The board holds the superintendent accountable. So as we mentioned earlier, the board has only one employee. And that employee is the superintendent. And so as part of that relationship, the board will have expectations for the performance of the superintendent. You know, is the superintendent moving the district in the manner and in the direction that the board has decided it should go. So that's really important to have clear expectations for the superintendent. So the superintendent can respond to those expectations. And we do that through usually a strategic plan and board goals or priorities that come out of the strategic plan for the superintendent and the board to follow. So it's a really important piece, but accountability for the board and the superintendent is critical. The board supports the superintendent with advice and counsel. This is really in my mind, one of the most important pieces. And this comes after you develop a good relationship with your superintendent. So as I mentioned before, one of the most important roles for the board is they are a conduit to the stakeholders. So the boards need to be telling the superintendent, okay, here's what I'm hearing. These are the things that people are asking me about. And sometimes, you know, that means that you're going to have to provide advice and counsel to the superintendent about, hey, you know, I know we're trying this particular program, but here's what I'm hearing. You know, people aren't happy about this. So what are we going to do? How can we address those issues? So that's a really important piece of the relationship. Now we're going to focus on management, and this is the realm of the superintendent. So management of the organization is the responsibility of the administration and primarily the superintendent. This includes activities of setting strategy for an organization like a school district or coordinating the efforts of employees or even volunteers to accomplish the objectives that may be set out in a strategic plan or goals for the district. So let's talk about the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent. Well, one, the superintendent works for the board, so they need to be loyal to the board. And at times that can be trying. Think about it with the with the superintendent. Every year, there is a possibility for the superintendent to have a new board. And I will tell you, even one new board member, so you as a prospective candidate for the board will change the makeup of the board. It will change the board to some degree. And so that's something that you have to be cognizant and aware of. So for the superintendent, every year, he's got to work with a slight, he or she has to work with a slightly different board. Sometimes it's certainly can be more than one member. And for some boards, it can be the entire board or nearly the entire board. So it can be a huge challenge because a lot of this is developed on relationships. So the superintendent assists the board with their counsel and advice. So just as I mentioned before, the board shares counsel and advice with the superintendent. The superintendent will also do the same. And I will say that most of the time we'll hear that the superintendent, because they're your educational expert. And sometimes they're hearing things that you might not will provide counsel and advice to the board. So they're an incredibly important advisor to you as a governing board. The superintendent keeps the board fully informed all the time, keeping the board informed about what's going on in the district, what they're doing, how the district is moving forward, or when you're facing challenges. The superintendent recommends instructional improvements. So when we talked about the board's role in approving curriculum and instruction, this is a part of what the superintendent has to do. Part of it may be wrapped up in curriculum and instruction, but there also may be other pieces that the superintendent may suggest for trying to improve. For trying to improve um instructional capabilities within the district. And the and some of those might not be directly with curriculum and instruction. Some of it may be centered around. Uh things such as uh social emotional learning. Um really working to make sure, you know, every student has an equity of opportunity to receive a good education. The superintendent recommends purchases and services. So usually within policy, the superintendent will have the ability. Uh to make purchases and contract services up to a certain amount. The policy, your policy may say, and the super superintendent has that authority to this many dollars. And then after that. It needs to come to the board for approval. So that's pretty straightforward. But the the oftentimes, ultimately, that's approved by the board. Either directly for specific purchases and services, which theoretically are already approved within the budget. And just by approving the budget, um you know, those purchases and services that fall below that cutoff. Uh level are automatically approved because you did that in the budget approval process. The superintendent manages the finance finances of the district. Now, they may not do that um directly. Obviously, there's gonna be uh certainly within the Anchorage School District. Um there's a lot that goes into managing the finances of your district. It's pretty complex. It's very large. So there's a whole team of people in the business office that help keep the wheels of the the business office uh running and managing those finances. But ultimately, the superintendent is the one that has to oversee and make sure that that's operating correctly. And that that there is communication between the superintendent and the business office. With the rest of the board. The board's role is to oversee the budget and ensure that the budget is being implemented as approved. So that, you know, there's two pieces there. The superintendent manages those finances, implements the budget. And the board oversees the budget implementation implementation to make sure it is happening the way that they approved it. The superintendent directs gains for student achievement. In other words. One of the very primary focuses for the superintendent should be, how can we? Make sure that students are learning, that student achievement is improving. Um I don't know of a single district that's satisfied. Uh in the state of Alaska, that their students are doing as well as they possibly can be. We always know that there are students out there. That are that that can do better, uh that the system can do better for them so that they can have a better opportunity to learn. So those are some of the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent. It's not everything, but it's some of the most important ones. Now we're gonna move into the realm of possi- of uh policy a little bit and the connection between. Uh governance as a school board and policy. How does this actually play out? So boards define their role really through your board bylaws, which are part of the board policy. And then they delegate operations of the of the district through policy. So. If you remember me saying earlier, so boards may develop and approve policy and make decisions based on policy. That policy basically helps direct the administration on how to operate the district. And at times, it directs the board on how to make decisions. So policy makes clear for the board's direction and intention and the administration as well. So board policy provides the framework for the day-to-day operation of the district. And we'll talk about that a little bit, and I'll show you some examples of what the the uh board policy looks like. It's set up currently in about nine different sections that address the specific areas within the district. To provide that um day-to-day operational instruction. It keeps the decision-making situation-based and not person-based. So there's a posterity, a posterity to. Um how this works, you know, when the board policy is approved. Uh the only way you can deviate from board policy is that you'd have to replace that policy with a different policy. So that there's always something in place. In other words, we're always continually going back. To this foundation of, okay, when we need to decide something, what does policy say? Um and when we have agenda items. Where on the, where in the policy manual are those decisions based? Everything should be based on the authority. Uh and the decision-making guide that policy provides. Policy helps keep the board focused on governance and board business, okay? And that's really important. That's kind of what I was getting at. Um I've seen districts uh that for each action item. That might be on the agenda for a meeting, that it's connected specifically to board policy. Which policies authorize this or inform the board on making those decisions? And at times you can also do the same thing if you have a strategic plan. And and link those things. And that just helps the board understand, okay, this is why we're doing this. This is kind of the framework and the paradigm that we're working in to try and make these decisions and why it is so. Real quickly, let's talk about what goes into policy. So policy composition, board policy, or what we call BP, when you look in the manual, is really the why. So policy tells us why and what needs to be done. However, in order to do that and in order for the superintendent to be able to implement that policy. There needs to be often what we call administrative regulation. So this is the response from the administration. On how they're going to implement the board policy. Sometimes it can be very simple. Sometimes it can be quite complex. So the board, uh the AR is generally a response that is generated by the superintendent or the administration. And it tells everybody how the policy is implemented. So one of the critical differences between board policy and administrative regulation is. Board policy is the realm of the board. And it has to be approved by the board and there's set in board policy in your bylaws. It says how that's done. So. Um you you know, usually it has to come up in a meeting. There may be a first reading on a policy, which is an introduction. Of the policy that the board hears and have an opportunity to discuss. The new policy and what's being proposed or modifications to an existing policy. Um and then maybe it makes it through a first reading. And then it may come back at the next meeting in second reading for final adoption. And if sub- substantive changes are made to that policy, well, then it might need to go back to first reading because maybe. It was a significant change and the and both the board, the administration. And more importantly, your stakeholders need to understand the changes that you're making in board policy. So trying to be responsive to your stakeholders is also a piece that needs to be folk. Needs to be considered when we're talking about board policy. On the other hand, administrative regulation does not require board approval. Board policy does. But administrative regulation is the response of the administrator to the policy. And generally, what we see is that that administrative regulation is presented to the board for review. And in in essence, um unofficial concurrence. Now, there are some boards that say, no, we definitely want to vote on adopting this administrative regulation. We prefer not to encourage that because administrative regulation sometimes needs some flexibility. Sometimes things change a little bit, um and the regulation might need to be flexible enough to create. Uh some changes in that fairly quickly. So we like to make sure that that piece has more flexibility than than the board policy piece. And that's why we suggest. That the board reviews it and the board concurs or maybe give some feedback to the regulations. Say, come work on this a little bit more. And bring it back to us for additional review. And hopefully we'll say, yeah, that seems to look pretty good. I wanted to give you just a a a quick um. Understanding of what policy kind of looks like. Uh and if you go on to the web. Uh you can go on to the the ASD website and get information. Uh and find the ASD policy manual online. AASB provides what's called policy online and uh the Anchorage School District is subscribed to that. It's a pretty great product, we think, and it allows folks to. You know, navigate through the policy manual online. You can do searches and all those kinds of things. But the policy manual is organized in these, basically these nine articles. Sometimes they're called articles, sometimes people call them um sections, but it starts. You know, the very first section, section zero one, so I guess there would be ten sections, is really the philosophy, goals and objectives of the district. And those are reflected from information, really from your community. Then uh article one and and so on, we talk about community relations. So how did the? How does the district deal with community relations, administration? What makes up administration, business and non-instructional operations, personnel, students? So lots about students and then instruction. There is a section on new construction. And um and for your district, for the Anchorage School District, it jumps right into article nine, which is the bylaws of the board. So those are the policies that specify how the board operates. Okay? Um we're missing section eight here. Um and that's because Anchorage is not what's called a rural education association. And in those areas, there's a section called section eight that deals with advisory school boards. So in those rural districts where there's not a local municipality or or a borough or something like that. Um there will be local um advisory school boards in, say, each village that may be a part of that district. And they have a responsibility to kind of be that same conduit within the village to the school system that you are directly as school board members. So each of those local advisory school boards. Work with the community and the local school and the principal there and then provide advice to the regional school board about issues. That uh are before them for the entire district. So that's why there's not a section eight here. This is actually a screenshot of if you go to the ASD policy online page, this is what you'll see. And on the left-hand side, you'll see that table of contents. And you can click on that. Um on that and it will open up all the policies below it. And then you just click on a policy, it'll bring it up. Uh the little red tab on the right-hand side, the little red icon on the right-hand side. Says PDF there. It'll allow you to download that particular policy if you like. Um and it's it's a great tool. You can do searches, uh you can look for keywords. Um you can highlight policies and save them in a hit list, those kinds of things. So it's it it's very um. It's pretty easy to use. There's a little bit of training here that you can go through, but it really provides an opportunity for the public. To be able to work through the ASD policy manual. The policies are based, for the most part. On the model policies the ASB has developed over the years. But each district can create specific policies for its own district that are meaningful. To it and may need to be sculpted and created specifically for the district. So that's it on policy for now. There's a lot we could talk about on policy, but I wanna move on now. Uh to the relationship between the board and the superintendent. And this is one of the most important things that a school board can do. Is work on the relationship between the board and the superintendent. Because when that relationship doesn't work, then usually. Uh the the advancement of the district in terms of increasing student achievement usually gets stalled to some degree. It's pretty hard when leadership is not working together. So let's talk about this relationship. It's paramount. So you and the superintendent, as a new school board member, should you get elected. Uh these are the things that you're gonna have to work on. Um and it doesn't come automatically. It doesn't come overnight. But this idea of working on mutual respect and trust, it doesn't mean you have to like that person. And sometimes it 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 just won't happen. But this idea that, you know, I respect that person and I trust that person is working in the best interests of our students. That's something that both the board and the superintendent need to work on. And you're not always going to agree with the superintendent. Um you need to have sometimes difficult conversations when they are needed. So uh you know, sometimes you're gonna disagree on things or you may not understand what's going on. You may have a misunderstanding. So that difficult conversation could lead to some great clarity and improve the relationship. That's what we would hope. And then ultimately, as a board member, you need to work as a team with the rest of the board and not necessarily as an individual. And the superintendent is part of that leadership team. We say that the superintendent is a de facto board member. Uh because they sit at the table, there are your educational expert. They don't have the ability to vote on issues, but certainly their advice and counsel to you as a board member is of great value. And should be regarded that way. So in terms of developing effective relationships between a board and superintendent, here's some things to think about. Really require honest communication. You know, again, this idea of no surprises, no hidden agendas, honest communication. Um clarify expectation. So boards need to be very clear with their superintendent what's expected. Alright, and and so as a board, that's the role that you have to take. Remember, as an individual board member. You have no more authority than anybody else in your community. So for you as a single board member to come in and make demands of the superintendent and expect that. Uh that's not gonna happen. That's not the way it works. It's only the board acting um as a board. That it has the opportunity to do that. So clarify expectations for the superintendent. Take a lot, this takes a lot of work and time. It doesn't happen overnight. So expect that that's gonna be the case. You need to have a shared purpose. And that shared purpose really should be the mission and the vision for your school district. You are going to have challenges. Even with the best relationships, you're gonna have challenges. In my time on the Sitka School Board, I worked with two great superintendents. The first superintendent was a gentleman who had been there for many years. He ended up uh leaving the district, I think, after fourteen years as a superintendent. Which is a long tenure in the state of Alaska for superintendency. Um and he worked at it very hard. He worked very hard to develop good relationships with all board members. Even those that he often didn't see eye to eye with. And as a board culture, we tried to do the same. Even if we didn't always agree with the superintendent. And then the next superintendent came in and we tried to do the same thing. Um and especially with a new superintendent, it really does take a lot of work to make sure that that relationship has the opportunity to develop. So hopefully, as you do these things, this will result in improved student achievement. So here's some things to think about. Superintendents matter. They are your educational expert. Their advice and counsel is going to be, should be heated. Sometimes it should be questioned, maybe. Uh to understand it, uh but uh their advice and counsel is gonna be really important. Boards make a difference. So this is a shared leadership responsibility. It takes working with the superintendent and working as a board together to make a difference, but you can make a difference. And I'll just digress real briefly to give you an example of difference that I think our board in Sitka made in making a decision. We were looking through some student achievement data um at an annual board workshop. And it was presented to us that uh look at the reading scores um that we had. And uh across the dis- district with various demographics of students. So you know, that was that was broken out. And and what we saw and what was presented to us was that. Students of low economic status um were struggling. They were struggling mightily. And so there was quite a difference between um their uh uh their ability. Um to meet the state standards versus those who were not in that category. And we also knew that within that category of low economic status, we had a high percentage of our Alaska native population. Um so those two things kind of weighed heavily on the minds of the board. And the board said, okay, what are we gonna do about that? What's a way uh that we could make a difference? Well, uh we weren't the educational expert. What we did know was we wanted to make a difference, so we set a goal. Of um. Improving the performance, improving the opportunity for those students of low economic status to succeed. What could we do as a school system to make that happen? And we told our superintendent that. And we said, we'd like, you know, we'd like for you to work on this. We didn't prescribe how to solve the problem. That wasn't our role. Our role was to say, this is what we wanted to have done. Well, the superintendent took that information, looked at it and then met with her team and met with people in the community. And decided, well, we know for a fact that, um, we can have a big impact. By, uh, improving reading scores and literacy. Um, if we can get to those students right from the very beginning, so that as students enter the system. Um, they're, uh, they're showing a greater propensity to be able to read. So we looked at the resources within the community and, and understood we had a waitlist on the. With the, um, the Head Start program. And then we had, we didn't have a universal, you know, we didn't have a preschool program within the district. And there was a whole segment of students, uh, within our community that were kind of falling through the cracks, that weren't getting the attention that they needed. So pooling the resources of the community and the district, the superintendent put together a program. Whereby we were really able to capture those students. We eliminated the waitlist for the Head Start program. And we captured these students that, you know, they were not, um, economically able. To afford the private preschool programs that were available in the community. And, um, and began working on, uh, a literacy program, a reading program. Well, it wasn't until years later, uh, when I was off the board and I was working for the Association of Alaska School Boards. I was working with, um, I just happened to be passing by, uh, the guy who was working on a project, looking at, um. Student achievement and reading results from various school districts. And I was talking to him and I, and he said, hey. Uh, look at this data from Sitka, cause he knew I was from Sitka and I'd been on the board in Sitka. He says, so I see all these other districts and we see this disparity. You know, between students of low economic status and, and, and other students. And, uh, but Sitka is different. So this is about three, four years after the board had implemented this program. And he said, look at the difference, you know, between this. Uh, and while there was still a difference, there was such a phenomenal increase in the ability for those students to read. I couldn't believe it. I mean, I, I got choked up because immediately as I saw it, I said, I think that that. Is a direct result of the board telling the superintendent, we want to improve reading. Uh, with that particular demographic. Um, and they created a program which captured those students and gave them the opportunity to get the help that they needed. And what I walked away from that conversation, I said, boards do matter. Boards can make a difference in students' lives. And I think I just saw that. So that was pretty moving to me. It, it, and it still gets me choked up a little bit. So. Boards and superintendent relationships really set the course for everything in the district. And, uh, this, this is incredibly important. And those relationships can be good for a long time and then eventually, uh, it may change. Something may change. The board may change. Um, and then it's time for a new relationship and that's not uncommon. The problem that we see in Alaska right now is. Uh, many times those relationships don't even get the opportunity to get started before all of a sudden there's another change. So the turnover in superintendents in the state of Alaska is incredibly high. And, uh, one thing that we struggle with and, and try to help with. At the Association of Alaska School Boards is to help boards understand how important. This relationship is between boards and superintendents and that both of them matter. It's a shared leadership. So board and superintendent relationship really does set the course for everything in the district. If the board and superintendent are not getting along. And they're not, they're not kind of marching to the same tune. The rest of the district is not gonna march along with them. Excuse me. So it's important that the vision for the district. Comes through both the board and the superintendent and that those, those goals are clear. And it's important for the superintendent to understand it, for the board to understand it and your community to understand that. This requires a focused course of action over time that will lead to student achievement. The last piece I'm gonna talk about this evening is what we call board standards. So. Um, back well, well over. Oh, I'd say twenty, almost thirty years ago now. The Association of Alaska School Boards created, uh, standards for boards. And one of the impetus for that is, uh, at the time, our board of directors looked at, uh, the fact that, hey. We have standards for students, expectations for what students need to learn. We have standards, professional standards, uh, for certified staff and administrators. Why don't we have standards? That help guide, uh, and provide some structure. For boards to understand what their role is. And so that's what this is. So it's based on these five areas. Vision, structure, accountability, advocacy and conduct and ethics. So the first one is vision and this really has to do with what comes from your community. So the board creates a shared vision to enhance student achievement. And most of the time, the way boards create that shared vision. Is they create an opportunity to come up with a strategic plan. That has great input from your stakeholders, from your community. You know, uh, which involve, community members may involve students, may involve staff. You name it, they might be involved in that because it, as a whole, that's what helps direct. Where we want to go with educating students in public education. So vision is in a, vision really is an unusual capability in discernment or perception, a mental image created. By your imagination. So if we think about that, we talk about the phrasing. Of what is the vision for the district? That's really important. Usually visions shouldn't be very long. They should be fairly concise and short. And say, here is what we envisioned for our district. Next, in order to make sure the vision, uh, really moves forward, you often. Times need some sort of a structure that supports that vision. So when we talk about structures, the board provides a structure. One of those structures is policy. I talked about that. And it's probably one of the most important pieces. So the board creates policy which helps operate the district. Um, and also creates policy to govern itself. So that structure supports that vision. Pretty straightforward. Other pieces, other structures that help support that are, is simple things like. Oh, how does a board meeting actually work? There's a structure of a board meeting, a structure of an agenda, let people know what the board is gonna work on. Um, and then how that board meeting actually functions is another structure. That allows the board to do the work to support the vision. Pretty straightforward. Next piece is really accountability. Are you capable of explaining and answering the work that you do? So the board measures district performance towards accomplishing the vision and reports those results to the public. Now, at times, the state has said, oh, we're gonna make sure that you report to the public. You know, so the report card to the public, which comes through, uh, the State Department of Education. Um, is one way to do that, but that's not the only way. Uh, boards can be responsive to the public and need to be responsive and transparent to the public. By giving the public opportunity to participate at meetings, for instance. Um, giving the, the public the opportunity to see how the budget is developed and your oversight of the budget. So those are things that, that happen. And then the other piece is. Really having, uh, more in-depth conversations about, uh, what are you doing to propel the achievement of students in your district? Or address, you know, the challenges that the system may have in reaching every student. Because there's some students that aren't doing as well as others. So how does that actually work? That's a part of your accountability role. The board needs to be one of the biggest advocates for the district. So the board champions your vision. And that advocacy, oftentimes when we talk about advocacy, people automatically jump to advocacy with the state legislature. And supporting education funding and that is critically important. But I really see this advocacy piece as equally important. Um, in advocating to your own local communities, what the district is doing. What the district needs in terms of support. And how the district is trying to move, uh, education forward. What are you doing for students? So the board has to continually be an advocate, um, with its own constituencies. And then in the state of Alaska, outside of that, with the state, uh, legislature and sometimes the federal government as well. And then finally, the last piece of board standards talks about conduct and ethics, you know, the way a person acts. Uh, and is that, are those actions ethical? Are they a principle of right and good behavior? So the board and its individual members conduct district business in a fair, respectful, responsible manner. So we want board members to understand what their role is in this locally elected public capacity. And, uh, that you go into this, uh, understanding that you need to be ethical, um, and you need to. To understand while you may disagree with your fellow board members. That your behavior will be civil and that the idea is that the board as a whole. Uh, has the authority and if you want to move the board, um, i- in a particular way. Um, and have a passion for something, you need to work with your other board members to make that happen. So board standards are all about setting expectations for effective governance. And they're really, we try to bring this back into many of the conversations that we have when we work with boards and do board training. And, and tie in key pieces of the training that we do where it fits with those board standards. So holding yourself accountable to the standards is critically important. So I'm gonna wrap this up now. Uh, really, you know, you can, you can see, I hope that you would have the opportunity as a board member. To make a difference. But it's not gonna happen overnight. It takes work and I'm here to tell you, it does. But it can be, in my mind, one of the most rewarding things that you can do. It changed my life being on a board. I mean, I was in a career that I loved. Um, and I did pretty well at that, but I was ready for a change. I got on the school board. I was passionate about it. Um, I'm a pretty lucky guy. Both of my daughters got to serve with me on the Sitka School Board as the student rep. For the school. I had nothing to do with that. That was, that was of their own free will and, and, and their. Um, involvement with local student government. But, uh, you know, you get the opportunity to work with students, you get the opportunity to work with great staff. Um, good superintendents, do those things and you can see the results, um, and a difference it'll make. So it's gonna take time to learn the job. You're gonna need to learn about the district and a district like Anchorage, it's a big district. It can be complex. But we all have the same goal and that's to educate students. At times you need to be patient, but that doesn't mean you don't need to be persistent. So be patient, but you may need to be persistent. Enjoy your new role in the community. It can make a difference for kids. Sometimes it can be very frustrating and lately, uh, you, you know, I think we've seen that. It's been, uh, you know, well-publicized that the. Stress that boards are under right now, given all the issues that are happening, um, that it can be very stressful. It's a stressful time for everybody. And I think if there's one thing that we've learned from COVID is there's no one right answer. Maybe there never was. That's my suspicion. Uh, but the idea is that as a board, you try to do the best you can for every student to the best of your ability. All right. And let's see, hang on one sec. So, uh, let's see, I'm just try- trying to see if we have, uh, any questions and question in, and, um. Let's see, oh, that, I didn't see the question about high, uh, superintendent turnover. So I'm sorry, I didn't see that. So. For some reason, I'm not seeing that on my screen. Nonetheless, yeah, what, I, I'm guessing the question is, you know, why do we have such high superintendent turnover? And, and how much, you know, how much, uh, is it? Well, generally what we've been seeing is somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent of superintendents in the state. Are, are turning over, which is an incredibly high rate. Uh, much higher than it has been in the past. And I think like everywhere else, we see that, you know, the stresses of the job finally get to people. Uh, but we also see that this relationship between boards and superintendents is also stressed. Um, we have a lot of new people on boards and we have a lot of new superintendents in roles. Um, that they haven't been in before. They don't necessarily have that superintendent experience. So one of the things that we're really working hard at is trying to help, uh, boards with new superintendents, understand their roles. And figure out ways to improve communication, kind of get on the same page. Do you have expectations, uh, that are reasonable? And are you evaluating the superintendent appropriately based on those expectations? But, um, overall, I would say, part of it is, we have kind of a, um, a number of people. That are retiring out of the, uh, superintenances. And so that's just kind of a natural attrition. And then we, we don't have a lot of experienced people necessarily. To backfill that have some superintendent experience. What we're seeing is a lot of the new superintendents are moving up from maybe. A- another district office position or a principal position. And I will tell you, having just taken over as the executive director this past year. Uh, you don't know what you don't know until you sit in the seat. Um, and it can be challenging. And I think one of the things that most new superintendents don't understand. Is how much time it takes working with the board and how important that is. So hopefully that helps answer that question. And let's see, another question here is, uh, what do you think we can do differently to decrease that turnover? Um, as I've said, I think one of the things that we can do really is to create, um. Better lines of communication, make sure expectations are clear. Uh, and what the roles are. And, you know, it's not always black and white. At times, there's a few gray areas, uh, and boards and superintendents gotta figure that out a little bit. You would think it would just be very definitive, but it's not always as definitive because. I, I think y- you'll probably agree that life is not black and white. For the most part, we can probably say ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of the time, we know what. What is the responsibility of the superintendent? What is the responsibility of the board? But I think where we see it break down is where, uh, either one of those don't understand their responsibility appropriately. And they don't communicate well. And that's where we would like to, uh, have the opportunity to help improve those things. So, what I wanted to present here, um, and I don't know why I'm not seeing all the questions and answers, Katie. So thanks for sending those on to me. But in this presentation and Katie has a PDF of this presentation that you can get. Uh, from her. So if you want to go back and review it, um, the board development team at ASB is made up of. Uh, I still do some myself, as, as you see, I'm, I'm online here. So even though I'm the executive director, I can't help myself, uh, working with boards. Um, it's a wonderful experience. I love doing it. But Timmy Tullis is our associate executive director. She's been with the organization for nearly twenty years. Um, Tiffany Jackson is our director of membership services and like me, she was on her local school board. Um, in Sandpoint in the, uh, Lucian's East Borough School District. Um, and served for many years there. She also served on the ASB Board of Directors and she also served. Uh, on the Board of Directors for the National School Boards Association was actually the first, um, Alaska Native American Indian. Uh, board member on that board. So that makes up our board development. That makes up our board development team primarily. And then we have a whole nother team that does a lot of great work that we really call conditions for learning. So the director of that team is uh, Lori Grass Green. That's her information there. You can go to our website and see what they do. And a couple of other people that are involved in community engagement work. Uh, social, emotional learning, those kinds of things. These are a couple of contacts that we have available for you. Let's see, just one more question here. I see that popped up on my text. Uh, do most board members meet regularly and or one-on-one? So that's a great question. So yes, uh, board members can meet one-on-one. So what's important to understand is. Uh, that there is what's a law called the Open Meetings Act. That governs how many board members can meet at any one time and discuss board um, business. So if you're meeting one-on-one with another board member to discuss an issue, that's fine. That's absolutely fine. But if you're meeting with uh, um, you know, uh, more than three. Members or a majority of your board, then that would violate the Open Meetings Act, because theoretically. You could be doing business of the board without notice to an official meeting, and we we may get into more of that with another webinar. Um, but yeah, we do encourage board members to communicate with each other. It's important. Not everything can be adequately covered necessarily at a meeting. It may be important for you to understand the perspective. Of a fellow board member that's putting forward uh, um. Uh, you you know, a proposal, something like that. So it's not out of the realm of possibility that you can talk to other board members. Hopefully that answers your question. So that's our conditions for learning team. And uh, that wraps up my presentation tonight, so I really wanna say thank you. For everybody that attended tonight. I wish you well if you're a candidate. Um, you're certainly welcome to visit our website at A A S B dot org. And uh, take a look at all the information we have for you. Um, our sole purpose i- is really to support school boards and the work that they do. Um, and uh, that's what we were created for in nineteen fifty-four. Uh, before statehood, and that's what we continue to do today. So. If you have any questions, feel free to send me an email or Timmy or or Tiffany. Um, and you know, we have a wonderful relationship with nearly every district in the state. Uh, and we look forward to supporting the Anchorage School District, and hopefully one of you that might be on the next Anchorage School Board. So thank you very much, and uh, I'll just check my messages one more time and see if there's any other questions. I appreciate you being here tonight, and we look forward to uh. Potentially working with you. Okay, take care.